Started. Hello. Hello, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the Portola Valley Planning Commission on June 23rd, 2022. Our topic this evening is a preliminary review of an Alpine Hills expansion of their membership. I guess we'll start off with a roll call, Laura.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Husko.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor. And Chair Koffsel.
Here.
And for the record, Vice Chair Goulden and Commissioner Targ are not present this evening. They both have conflicts of interest for this project.
Great. And we always open our meetings with the option for the public to make comments, things they'd like to tell the planning commission that are not on the agenda. So things that do not have to do with this Alpine Hills issue. So we have much fewer attendees than we have in some of our recent meetings. But do we have any attendees that would like to address the commission? I do not see any hands. Shall we go on to a staff report, Laura?
Yes, thank you. Suzanne Avila will give the staff report.
Great. Hi Suzanne.
Sorry, I had myself muted there. Okay, I got the presentation up, but I'm not seeing how to share my screen. So I know there's a way to do this.
You should have down at the bottom green button that says share a screen and then you'll have.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. That's what I'm. Okay.
It might just be your view because you shouldn't have.
I've got a slide. I've got on slideshow. Is it? Do I need to have it in a different mode to be able to get to that option? I thought, yeah, usually it's a bar that pops up. And I'm not.
It's part of Zoom. If you look at your Zoom screen, do you see participants at the bottom?
No. So maybe that's my problem. Maybe get all.
Yeah, float over the bottom. Sometimes you have to float over it.
Yep, that's what I'm doing and I'm not getting a neck getting to share screen mode.
Give me a second and I can share the presentation.
Okay, thanks, Laura. I've had this problem before with this computer and I don't know what the issue is. I see the, you know, whoever's talking, I have a little window up at top, up at top. It's not showing me everybody that's participating. Fortunately, I sent the presentation to Laura this afternoon, so she can open it up.
It's always good to access points to a presentation.
I think almost there.
You have a share a.
This is Zoom?
Yes.
There's a thing in the box to share a screen.
It's not, it's not showing up on my computer.
Almost got it.
So how, usually there's a bar that floats up, isn't there?
Yeah, but.
She's going to pull it up at her end, but it just happens to me in the floor where it doesn't pop, bar doesn't pop, but then I need to.
This is, this is not Zoom. This is something else.
Well, that's a PowerPoint presentation.
Right, but you have to be in the Zoom app in order to get the share.
Well, I am, but how do I?
Okay, can we, can we go from here? Does everybody see it? It's in, it's in PDF, but it should be fine.
I see it.
Bring up the PowerPoint. And then bring up Zoom. Now bring up Zoom.
Where?
Where is the Zoom app?
Dan, can we?
I don't actually see, I'm not seeing the, here, I'll make this big. I've got a little dinky window, so it's not.
You can't see my screen?
No.
So.
Have a little tiny window only, so.
You gotta go back to full screen. You're, you're in the upper right hand corner to make it big again.
This is, is that, is that that little thing right there?
Oh, that's, yeah, try that.
Okay, got it.
Now it's on.
All right, great.
Good.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Um, so good evening, everybody. This is a preliminary review of a conditionally used permit amendment for Alpine Hills Tennis and Swimming Club. Their club is requesting to increase the membership by 50. They currently have approval for 700. I think it's going to, so it's going to go to 750 with the, if the request is approved. Okay, next slide. So for the, you know, general meeting format, I'll, once I get through the staff report, if there's any commissioner questions for staff, then the applicant has an opportunity to speak. We do have Garth Walker, the general manager present, and I think there's a few other, the few other members, a couple of board members and other present for the applicant's side. Then if the commission has any applicant questions, if there's any public comments, we did receive one set of comments from an interested neighbor. She did not express any concerns about the membership specifically, but is asking for a sign restricting parking where she lives. And so I think you all received that this afternoon. So that has been the only public comments received on the project. And then the commission can discuss and let staff and the applicant know if you have any questions, concerns, if there's any additional information you need to be able to make a decision. Next slide, please. So again, it's a conditionally used permit amendment. The club has been in existence prior to the towns and corporation. The, the most current use permit approval was in 2017, when, when there was an expansion of the, in a rebuild of the clubhouse. So there, those conditions were included with the commission's packet. So there won't be any really onsite changes. There's all the current parking in club facilities will stay in place exactly as is. Their request is simply to increase the membership by 50 so that more residents and more individuals can be served. There is apparently about a six month waiting list for club membership right now. So this particular project is categorically exempt from CEQA. There's two different sections that apply. One is allowing an operation of existing private facility in this case with no expansion of the use. And the second section is allowing an existing facility for public gatherings because there are on occasion, special events and swim meets and things like that at the club tennis tournaments. Okay, next slide. So the town commissioned a traffic and parking study, and this was done by Hexicon Traffic Consultants. They did some traffic counts and site visits. The results of that study were that there will be an increase in daily vehicle trips because of the increase in membership. But they did not expect any operational issues at driveways or any safety or queuing issues. Were in, no queuing or safety issues were, were observed when the consultant was on the site. And the onsite, onsite parking is adequate to support the club use in special events with the additional memberships. Next slide. Just a little aerial view of the club as it exists today and showing, you know, there's really, it's all residential around the facility. The general plan designations, neighborhood, community, the site's just under nine acres in size. Next slide. So here's the site plan of the whole site. And as others parking up front along Alpine Road with an entrance, kind of a one-way circular system. So there's a one driveway for, that's an entrance, one driveway is an exit. And then the driveway off Los Trancos is in and out. Next slide. This is showing the overflow parking. So if there's a large event going on, they have overflow parking in addition to all those regular paved spaces. So there's 178 total parking spaces, including these 54 overflow spaces. And there's also five accessible spaces within those 124 uncovered paved spaces on the site. Next slide. There's just a couple of photos that's showing the entrance on the left and the exit on the right. These are the two driveways on Alpine Road. Next slide. This is the Los Trancos Drive, which is an entrance and exit. Next slide. There's just a couple of shots showing, you know, parking during the day. They're typically not full unless there's a big event happening. Next slide. So I have all of the use permit findings, each one on a slide. If, I, I'm not going to go through those and read them. There were some draft findings included in the staff report. And so these are all on slides if the commission wants to discuss any of those. So we can just, you know, kind of, they're there if we need them and. So again, at this point, we had one public comment. There was a subsequent public comment received, but it was from the same individual. So there was one that the commission received prior to the last meeting that we weren't able to hear the item and then the one that you received today. So both, so there really are technically two, but it's from the same neighbor. And we did send out new notices. The site was, the application was originally noticed for the May 20th meeting, which were, which we were, or excuse me, the June 1st meeting, which we weren't able to hear the item at, and then subsequently a second notice was sent out for tonight's meeting. Next slide. So the next steps after this meeting are for the applicant and staff to answer any questions, provide any additional information or address any direction from the commission. And then once the, if the use permit is indeed approved, the club plans to put 25 memberships in place immediately and then to do the second 25 in 2023. And that concludes my report, so I'm available if you have any questions. We are, staff is recommending approval of the use permit amendment and but we're not making a decision this evening. This is simply to get feedback and input from the planning commission and then if everything, and then to return at a subsequent meeting for approval.
Great, thanks Suzanne. So Judith and Craig, do you have any questions for Suzanne?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. On the overflow parking, what's the surface of the overflow parking? Is it just dirt? Is it sort of grass? What, what kind of areas are for that overflow?
Area I saw looked like it was a base rock, but I think we can have, Mr. Walker can probably clarify that better than I can.
Yeah, some of it's mulch and some of it's.
What was that?
Some of it's mulch and some of it's base rock.
Yeah, it has a, it has a covering over. It's not just dirt.
Okay, so something that would be, it is relatively fire safe?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay. Um. If we approve the additional 50, is there any preferential treatment for Portola Valley residents or is it just whoever's on the list?
Bylaws state that it's based on chronological order when the applications were received.
Okay.
Believe there's a, Garth, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it 60 or 60 something, 68% of the members are actually Portola Valley residents somewhere in that range?
Well, it's, it's changed since it's, originally it was written in March 2021, when the application was submitted, there were 18 people on the waitlist, 18 families, of which 10 were from Portola Valley or Woodside. As of the end of May, the waitlist is up to 82, of which 41 are Portola Valley or Woodside residents. So percentage is about the same, but obviously the gross number is much larger.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all for you, Craig. Great. Judith, do you have questions for Suzanne?
Yeah, just a few around the numbers. When you talk about a membership, you distinguish between family and couples or individuals. And is, I assume there's, you know, family membership can be any number of people. But, but please help me understand what is in fact, you know, a family, an average family membership. How many people?
Well, it varies obviously, but it's immediate family under the age of Elizabeth. Is that 25 or 26?
Uh, yeah, a family membership in our bylaws is your, the primary, the spouse and children under 25 years of age.
Okay. Okay, because the, and then the couples are just individual. How, how are you going to administer the 20 plus five? I mean, you know, are they just going to all be on the waiting list and you're going to take the top, the first five individuals and couples and the first 20 families?
There's no designation between the two. It goes by who's been on the, the first cup, the first membership to be admitted will be the one that's been on the waitlist the longest and then work her way down.
So the first 25, will you, the first 25 can be all families, for example?
I would say that probably most of them are families, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then there's numbers in here that say it's not to, not likely to be more than 175 additional individuals if all of these memberships play out. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
That's approximate math, correct? Yes.
Okay. And there's an average, it looks like an average of two trips per member in terms of road, road traffic. It says 87 new trips. So you just, is that based on historical numbers or just a sense of likelihood?
That's based on the consultant, the traffic consultant's estimates.
Okay.
Yes, so the traffic consultant based those numbers on there are accepted trip generation rates that they use when they're evaluating. They also did actually do, do some counts on the site, some weekend counts and some weekday counts to get a sense for how many people were coming in and out on particular days of the week. So that's how they come up with the numbers. It's, it is, it is still a projection, but they're reasonably accurate based on experience and other like types of uses. And then they use the accepted traffic generation rates that they, when they're coming up with these numbers.
Okay. Um, I was on the planning commission when the last approval was, was given. And there had been neighbors near the over, overcapacity parking that had expressed concern. Have there been issues reported in the intervening years regarding traffic issues? I know there's, the traffic consultant said nothing, but, but are the neighbors reporting anything?
We have not received any phone calls. In fact, we have a pretty good relationship with all the neighbors around us and are highly cooperative with all.
Yeah, and the town, I don't recall any calls since the construction has been done. So there were some construction communications happening, but since they've been in operation for the new clubhouse, we haven't received any.
Oh, that's interesting. And it sounds like slightly more of the trips are going to be coming in off Alpine, but you're still getting a significant portion coming in through Los Trancos. Because we weren't sure at the time how that was going to play out. Is that accurate? Did I interpret that right?
Suzanne, do you have an opinion on that?
You know, I, I think some people park based on, you know, what they're going to be doing if, you know, because there's tennis courts that they're right on, right near that Los Trancos exit or entry. And I think if they're going to play on those courts, you know, the likelihood is they're going to come in and park there. Or if they want to go directly to the clubhouse, those back parking spaces are pretty close, but yeah, it doesn't, the front, I thought when I was there, I went out a couple of different times. It seems like more are parking up on, off the Alpine entrance. But that was just an observation, not based on anything scientific.
Okay. All right. I guess the last question is looking forward. Is there a plan for development beyond this cycle of additions on growth?
Sorry, would you mind repeating your question?
Yeah, you're asking for up to 50 additional members now. Do you have projections on additional future growth of the facility beyond the current ask? I'm kind of curious.
We do not.
Okay. That's it for me, Anne.
Okay, great.
Um, can I ask one follow-up to Judith's question? Um, when I look on page, red page, hang on, it's not scrolling. Red page five at the bottom, it says 25 memberships to be added upon approval, 20 families and five couples. I felt like that was a different answer than I just heard to Judith's question. So could you clarify?
And you're right, that's, yeah, that was just brought to my attention too. So you're correct. That's the way it would be handled.
Okay, and is that true for the next 25? Because it, it wasn't as clear to that. It looked like it was 25 and then 25, but it didn't actually say anything about the next 25.
We'd have to see how that, that first set goes, but that would probably, that's the assumption would be the same.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, great. Um, let's, Suzanne, I understand that residents were given notice that were 1,000 foot. Do you know how many houses or residents that was?
I don't, because the noticing was actually done by another staff member specifically, so I didn't actually see them and, you know, the Laura may have a guess, but usually the, one of the planning technicians is doing the noticing and so I didn't actually see the list.
I could probably look it up, but it would take me a moment.
If you have time, I'm just curious how, um.
How many?
We've got remarkably few comments on this project compared to many others. I'm just trying to have a feel for myself. How many, how many houses are really within the thousand?
Right. If I, you know, it's an eight acre or nine acre property, so it's going to be a fair amount. Yes, with, with the properties being pretty, pretty large, that does cut down on the number.
And this is for both Suzanne and Mr. Walker. Do you have, I, I looked at the traffic study and it seems like, yeah, plenty of parking and numbered in and out trips. Do you have any feel for how these numbers are affected by COVID? You know, it looks fine now, but do you have any concern that it's people still aren't going out or going to restaurants and going to gyms so much, but it could balloon up if COVID really seemed over in a year or two?
I don't have any concern about that. That's a good question, especially today's day and age. This traffic study was done last fall when we were coming out of the first wave before Omicron hit. And we were relatively busy last fall. So that, that was as close as we got pre-Omicron to normal operating status, since the new clubhouse have been open, really. And it hasn't, it's not a whole lot different now that we've come out of Omicron.
And you don't have a feel, do you, do you have any numbers for, can I call it October 2019? Actually, I'm not sure when your construction was. I don't want it numbers that were during construction. That would be extra low, but.
Yeah, like the construction was probably somewhere between 2018 and they finished in 19.
Yeah.
I think the approval happened in, in late 2017.
I guess I'm trying to ask, how typical do you think these numbers are of a, you know, when it's really running the full strength that it could run? I'd hate to approve this based on the current traffic things and then find out, oh, no.
Well, the consultant did review, I think the consultant reviewed a lot of the club records in terms of events, special events like swim meets and other parties that do historically as well as, you know, because they, obviously there weren't a lot of them in 2020. And maybe not even in 2021, but that, so they looked at data prior to that when they were looking at the special events. So they looked at it pre-COVID, definitely. The counts were done well into the epidemic. So I, I think they're fairly reliable. It doesn't mean that the club use won't increase as more people start coming out and you know, participating in, in events and things.
Another variable with that is before the new construction, Windmill Preschool operated there, which generated a lot of traffic. Now that school is obviously in the town center and we don't have that traffic. So the net comparison is very difficult because the circumstances have changed.
I see. Yeah, yeah, good. Okay. And what I'm about to say, I know my date is very old, but I, you know, sometimes I've seen cars, let me call it strewn everywhere, like just all along Alpine, um, you know, up on the road. Do you have insight into that and when it happens and how often it happens in a year?
I don't know that I've witnessed that. Elizabeth or Christina, I didn't know that I've witnessed that. You see it down around Rosati's a lot, but.
You haven't seen, how long have you been at Alpine Hills?
Almost a year now.
Okay.
I've been there 10 years and I've, I've not seen it on Alpine. I've seen it on those trancos, but not Alpine.
Okay. Yeah, I used to see it, but my date is probably 10 or 15 years old. Okay.
Um, here's the chair. We noticed about 80 people and I can show you the map really quick if you're interested. I found that.
Oh, thanks. Okay. Oh, you noticed 80 people. Okay, no, that, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so that's about, so that's where 1,000 foot radius gets us.
No, that's nice. Okay, yeah, yeah.
That gives you a sense of how big, like out into the neighborhood it goes.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, good, good. And that's plenty of people that if the people were going to have a problem, at least some of them would have piped up, I think. Thank you. I like that. Okay. Um. Yeah, that's all my questions for right now. What's next? Do we have a presentation by the applicant or?
Yeah, if the, if the applicant wanted to, to give any presentation.
You know, the report that Suzanne gave and the one that's been prepared by the town staff, I think pretty much says everything that we would have to say. Christina and Elizabeth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to add, I'm Christina Pasha, by the way, I'm a board member and member. And maybe just to re, just to revisit the issue that was discussed about the, the 25, the first wave of 25 and then the second wave of 25. My, my reading of it or my, and I just want to make sure everybody's on the same, you know, that, that there's clarity around this. My, my understanding of it was that the first wave of 25, you know, there'd be 20 families and five individuals slash couple memberships, but that there was no restriction as to the second 25 because there was nothing stated about that in the second 25. But I just wanted to kind of, you know, follow up about that, just to make sure we're all on the same page about it. Because I think, I don't know if the comment by Mr. Taylor suggested that, that maybe the 20 to five ratio would apply for the second 25.
Does, I have a question for you on that. Does that mean that the 175 maximum individual members or individual add to the, the facility? How much would that change for the, the extra five not being families and couples or being couples and individuals rather than families? Does the 175 assume all of those 25 are families?
I mean, if you take 175 divided by 50, that's 3.5, which seems like a pretty average family size, I think, in terms of, Elizabeth knows the composition of the waiting list probably, you know, the best, but I would think that, that, you know, a, a immediate family in Portola Valley, 3.5, 3.5 seems pretty, pretty accurate. So I would think.
That seems about accurate. I would agree with that.
And that's assuming they were all family memberships. If you take, you know, five to the individual couple, obviously it takes that, you know, takes that down. And that's assuming they were all family memberships. If you take, you know, five to the individual couple, obviously it takes that, you know, takes that down.
Great. Any more questions, Judith or the applicant? Nope. How about you, Craig?
Um, I guess the only other question I had was related to parking. What do you guys do when you run out of parking? Like, what's, what's the plan? Is there a plan in place? Because I mean, obviously Rosati's, there really doesn't seem like there's a plan in place. The solution that's currently, the ad-hoc solution, I'll say, doesn't seem like a particularly great one that we'd like to replicate.
That's a good question and we don't lie ourselves after what Rosati's does. We're taking a proactive stance where we're encouraging people to Uber. Uh, and ride share, a lot of members live within walking distance, so we, when we have an event that we know it's going to be large. We promote that and we're even considering maybe. Having some sponsored Ubers available for members as well to cut down on traffic and also cut down on other potential issues as well. So we're trying to take a proactive stance of that to avoid getting into overflow issues.
And I might, I might add that we also say, usually there's notifications to members, you know, when we anticipate that may happen, we encourage carpooling. Um, and I think quite a few folks ride bikes to the club.
They do, and also we encourage staff to carpool, then also if it ever gets to a situation where we know it's gonna be, whenever those situations will have staff park. We'll make arrangements with the garage, so with the offices across from the garage and shuttle staff back and forth, which saves some spots as well.
Yeah, I was also wondering about like valet parking for an event or something, you know, where you can sort of pack cars in more tightly, things like that, because. You know, that's one thing I do worry about. If we start getting a lot of, if the events get bigger, because it's always hard to tell, and even for you guys, it's hard to tell, but. You know, if they get bigger and then they spill out on the streets, I think that's when, you know, everybody starts to then not feel so good about it.
We had a large event last fall and we hired parking attendants outside parking service and we had no issue with. Parking at all.
How many large events do you have a year?
Two or three, plus maybe two swim meets. I think it's stated and I may be off the number one way or the other, but it's not a whole lot.
Maybe this is a question for staff. Is that in? In an existing CUP on the limit on the number of events or is it just open?
I, I've been made aware of that, so.
Right, yeah, no, I was, I was more asking staff if they knew in terms of. No, 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 no problem, no. This is kind of an interaction, so no, no problem there. I was just more, I was thinking that, I was wondering if the old CUPs, because some of our CUPs. Um, actually do put a cap on the number of annual events, so I was just wondering if that's in some of the older CUPs.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the conditions. I believe there, there, there are definitely some conditions in there about special events, so. I'll have to take a closer look at that and. Is that something that we can report back to you when it comes back to the commission or would you like us to try to figure it out tonight?
Uh, I think we can report back. I mean, I think the main thing is just to make sure we have reasonable bounds that, you know, the community will look at and say. Yeah, okay, you know, this is a valued institution in the community and their impact on the community looks about like this and. Then everybody can look at those numbers at the same time and feel that they're reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was looked at pretty carefully back in twenty seventeen, that's not that long ago, however. If there isn't a safeguard condition in there like that, that is something that could be added with this amendment.
Yeah, I would want to know that. Sorry to get ahead of any discussion. I can hold my comments, Anne, if you want us to.
No, it's fine by me.
Okay, I would want to know that because if you're adding a hundred and seventy-five additional people. I, I just think we would be prudent to, to understand what the current limits, if any, are, and consider. I'm not sure they would be needed, but I'd want to know the information. So thanks for reporting back.
And I have a question for the applicant. How did you decide on the number of fifty to expand to? Why didn't you ask for twenty-five or say a hundred?
Christina and Elizabeth, you were here during that time, did you help us with that one?
I. Christina, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not, that's a good question. I'm not sure that I, that I remember or was part of that, that conversation. I'm guessing that that just seemed sort of like a, you know. A reasonable ask under the circumstances and, you know, given what our wait lists look like then and, and given the total number of members, it just seemed like. You know, I'm surmising that that seemed like a reasonable place to land.
And from a club management perspective, fifty is a very reasonable. Manageable number, if it's need improved. If you look back at last time, the membership was increased with two thousand five and that wasn't a hundred. So this ask is for, you know, obviously significantly less.
And one, one thing I just want to point out too is, I, I don't know statistically how much. The increase in the membership affects the increase in the event size because a lot of our events are open to non-members too. So, you know, for example, you know, the club mate hosted recently. A private event, the Portola Valley Schools Foundation held their annual fundraiser there, you know, if there's non-members at that event, you know, so. It, it may not, it may not be a straight up, you know, correlation there.
Right, right. Yeah, okay, thanks. Good. Any more questions from Judith and Craig? Sounded like no, but. Is the next step to open up for public comments? Great, so. Of the attendees, do any of you have something you'd like to say? Uh, please raise your hand.
We just have three members of the public and one is our council liaison. Um, so two of the members of the public, if you're new to this meeting, if you could raise your hand in Zoom using the raise your hand feature. And I do not see any comments. One of the people might be the same person that sent the letter, I'm not sure, but. That may be the case, so the comments may already be represented in the feedback that's been received from the public.
Okay, great. Uh, in that case, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. And I think the main. Format is that can we find the findings? That are listed in our packet on red page seven, is that right? Shall we? Well, I'm fine if people want to discuss it in general and then maybe we can go through the, the findings one at a time. Judith or Craig, do you have any sort of general comments you'd like to make before we kind of march through the findings?
Um, at least for me, I mean, I, I looked at the findings that staff proposed, they, they all look pretty reasonable to me. Um, I think what I would like, which is why I was asking my question before, is I, I'd like to be able to put some guardrails around it. I mean, the CUP is the natural time to do that. So, you know, number of events, what happens if, you know, parking gets out of hand, you know, things like that. Where I just think it's prudent for us to make sure that we, we don't have to have a complaint come to us. And then go back through this whole process that instead, you know, collectively, we could just work together and make sure that we come up with some reasonable stuff. I mean, the other thing was, there was this public comment that came in about the parking sign. I'm assuming you guys don't have an issue putting up that sign. It seemed, seemed pretty minor to me, but.
Completely reasonable, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I figured. So I, I think that's where I'm going. The rest of it. You know. As long as the assumptions hold, then the parking spaces and everything else look pretty reasonable. And this is certainly an institution that we value in the town. The only other. Thing I'm a little fuzzy on, which I'd like to understand better is. Is there a percentage of Portola Valley residents? I mean, we do it at the priory, right, where we expect a certain number of students to be, you know, from the town and. I didn't quite hear, hear that answer. I heard that it seems like it's a pretty good mix and it's logical because it's in Portola Valley. But I didn't get a sense for, if you let the next fifty people in and they were all from outside of Portola Valley. Um, you know, what does that do to the percentage? And as people leave, can you just keep bringing people in? So. I mean, one problem with chronological, it's a little bit ad hoc, right? You just, you get the mix you get rather than necessarily getting the mix that we'd like to see from a town perspective.
I mean, I think it's, it's, it is about fifty fifty on the, on the list, so I'm assuming that chronologically, that they're not, you know, that they're dispersed relatively evenly, it would be about. You know, presumably about fifty fifty coming in and, you know, the other, the other fifty are places like Memo Park and, you know. Typically neighboring communities for obvious reasons, right? So.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess what I'd like for the next meeting is to, if you could give us a breakdown of the total population and the waitlist. So that we could get a sense for.
It's in the packet. It says at present sixty-seven percent of our members are PV residents with an additional twelve percent living in Woodside. On the current waiting list, sixty-one percent are residing in PV and Woodside. So I think, Craig, are you asking for that to be further broken down?
I, I'm okay. I just, I thought Garth was saying maybe those numbers were outdated, maybe I'm.
The membership numbers are not outdated, the waitlist numbers have changed.
Okay.
Yeah, this application was made in March of twenty twenty-one, so when that letter was written. Definitely could have changed in that timeframe. So we maybe update that and make it current.
How about you, Judith? Do you have anything general to say before we go through the findings one by one?
Yeah, yeah, um, overall, it's nice to see that after twenty seventeen, this played out in a, what appears to be a pretty smooth way. Um, you know, it's nice that you get on with the neighbors because I know there were a few points where there were, there were concerns. So that, that is great. I think it makes a lot of sense and as Craig said, I, I want a little more updating of the numbers. And I do think there's. You know, the only concerns that I have right now are. About the, the parking capacity and the interference with, you know, neighbors' lives. And it seems like the latter is not, not an issue, so it's more focused for me on. Um, the logistics around the parking and making sure we're being thoughtful, since there could be up to a hundred and seventy-five more people. There in the next few years. One other question is the request for the parking. Uh, sign, the no parking sign. It, it makes logical sense to me. I do know there's. Uh, been a policy in town to kind of limit the number of signs, so I don't know if Laura has any, any comments on that since we'll eventually want to. Address that in one way or another. I think a response will be needed, so I'll turn it back to you, Anne.
Great, thanks. Uh, and if I'm making general comments, yeah, the proposal seems reasonable. My, or I feel like the only thing that the neighbors in town would be care about is the parking and if it. Expands to not fit in the space available and then noise, if somehow more people would cause more ruckus parties, but. We aren't hearing complaints, so I'm fine with that. And I would love to talk more about the parking sign. Actually, my reaction was negative to that. Uh, there is such a thing as sign pollution. And I, I also, I mean, these are public streets, why can't people park wherever on a public street? And I would rather have cars park on Creekside than on Alpine. Or Rastodaro in the case of. Rosati, so I, I'd like to learn more about or hear more about the parking topics, parking sign. Topics. Shall we do that now or shall we go through the findings and then come back to that parking sign question?
Well, I think there's a question about whether you need to go through all of the findings, by, you know, defer to the planning commissioners, whether you think that that's needed. Or if you think generally that the findings could be made. Um, so I'm hearing a couple of themes in terms of additional information that you would like to come back and I'm assuming then. That we could draft some conditions of approval that would be a starting point for your discussion. Um, so I think the parking has been adequate based on the information we have available up to this point. So we want to look into the future with the additional. Members and anticipate for especially a larger event, what would happen? And so maybe that would be things like parking management, maybe they could do some monitoring. Um, and if they reach a certain point, like a certain. Uh, percentage or capacity of their parking, then that would trigger parking management for future events. We could think about something like that. Um, because they've already done some parking management, so I think that could be a good way to approach it. Um, and then it sounds like we want to be sure about the numbers, understand what's on the waiting list. Make sure we've got clear in the record kind of the families compared to individuals and couples. And then understand the percentage of Portola Valley residents on the waiting list and existing. We, we know we've got that information, we just want it to be, I think, a little bit more clear, so that everyone knows what we've evaluated. And then I think we probably want to hear from the applicant. Whether they are willing to make some kind of commitment about prioritizing perhaps Portola Valley residents. Or if there's some way to monitor that percentage of Portola Valley residents going into the future. Um, so maybe it's a reporting requirement or something like that, just so that it's being tracked. By the planning commission. And then in terms of the sign, I think what we should do is staff can. Uh, talk about it with Howard, with our public works director, because he is most tuned in to the issues of. Signs along the public right of way and what the latest thinking has been in relationship to that, and we can give you some options. For you to consider related to that signage. So those are the three here kind of coming forward. Does that sound like what the planning commissioners are looking for?
Yeah, and the last thing was mentioned and it's probably on your radar anyway, but the, is there the, in the current CUP? Direction on the number of large events? So that information would be good.
Yeah, there is not any. I went through the conditions when you were discussing and there, there is not a condition that limits the number of special events. And or the number of participants. That I can see, so that may be something we want to discuss putting in.
Okay, so I think this, from a staff point of view, this seems like things that we want to document and just kind of. Because we're doing, as we look at the CUPs, right, that's an opportunity to make sure that's reflected. And we don't want the events to get so big that they become impactful, is what I'm hearing, because they haven't been very impactful all these years. We want to make sure that that stays the same even with additional members. So if it would be okay with the planning commission, we'll look into those topics and we'll propose some conditions of approval for language, we'll work with the applicant team. Um, so that we can kind of come up with approaches to a couple of these different things. And then we would bring it back to you with the draft conditions, so that you could look at the final. Findings of approval language and conditional approval language and see if that all comes together for you.
That sounds great. Yeah, good. So we'll go over the, the findings in detail or agree next time, but I think we're saying. That as we've each looked at them. We don't see a big red flag. And then we'll go over the conditions that you, you and the applicant come up with. I'm happy with that. Craig and Judith, you are too?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy. Laura, I think that was a great summary, thank you. Good job on the fly. So, yeah, no, I, I think that's great. And, yeah, I mean, I read through all the conditions, so unless there's some gotcha there. That Suzanne didn't get at, which, I mean, obviously she, you know, didn't, I, I thought they all looked fine, so I, I'm actually good with the conditions. I, I feel like they beat the conditions, so. I think it's just the other stuff around that.
The findings, Craig?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the, the, the findings, when I read through them, all, all look reasonable. I'm good with that. And then the stuff that you put around it, that we just, you just talked about, that sounded perfect to me.
Okay, so what we like to do is we'll make the findings a little bit more specific based on the things we just talked about. So we'll add in some sentences that are like, the membership is X and with the increase of Y, then this will still be fine, so that we've got a good record. That people can go back and see and understand. So just tighten them up a little bit.
No, and I feel great about the parking management. I mean, I heard from the. Um, management that. Um, Alpine Hills is attentive to the parking management and I like that. I feel like. I even don't, I mean, if people have one or two events that spill over, that's the way the world works, but I, I love it when the applicant. Is attentive to it and tries to. Manage it the best they can, so that feels good.
Um, you might just, from the applicant side, was there anything else that you wanted to add? That, that, but we'll just be in touch on the staff side to work through some of these final details.
Yeah, Laura and Suzanne, you know, we'll try to, we can work up which the information you need. But I think a lot of it's here already. It's just, you're right, adding it to the proper sections of.
And it's about, yeah, for us, it's about strengthening it so the public knows what to expect. That's a big part of our job, collective jobs between staff and the planning commission.
Completely understand.
And I was just going to say, I just want you guys to know, we, you know, we appreciate having, having you guys in the town. So, I mean, and, and you've been good stewards. So thank you. Um, I think we just want to make sure that we put, you know, some bounds around the larger things so that if you're not the great manager that you are and somebody else comes in and they decide to go rogue on us, that, you know, the CUP is sort of our opportunity to do it. So I don't think this reflects on the job you're doing, because it sounds like you've been doing a great job. I think we just want to make sure that it's bounded for the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And our job is, you know, remain viable for the community five, 10, 15, 25 years in advance. And this allows us to be able to, uh, go down that path.
Thank you all.
Great. Thanks. Um, so that's all our topics for this meeting, right? No, not even any minutes to review from the past. Okay, good. So I think we're, uh, tidied up.
So would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would actually.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Thanks everyone. And then just for the record, um, we're going to have another planning commission meeting on June 29th, which is Wednesday. Wednesday's our normal day, but the 29th is not our normal pattern in the, in the month. And that will be to continue to be the second part of our housing element discussion. So let's see you in six days.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone.
Good night.